All right, you're talking already, Daniel. Governor's Stamp Proposals. Proposals.
To the flag, the United States' honor and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the December 8th meeting of the Ryenbeck, the Board of Trustees. As always, we're going to start with our county legislator, Joel Tyner.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Happy holidays, everybody. I just wanted to give you an update on the county budget. I know you're getting information from a lot of sources. The first thing I want to do is extend a lot of gratitude and appreciation to my brothers, sisters, and sisters on the other side of the aisle. I did have a number of amendments, you may be aware. Two of them actually passed, pretty strong by partisan support. Just recently, I started pushing for something called Farm the Table. You know, trying to, you know, a lot of us are aware that trying to get the local stores and restaurants to include more food produced by local farmers. And just recently, I came up with the notion of gee, maybe we could kind of expand that to county operations. And not that every single product sold at Duchess Stadium at a Renegades game or a football game would come from local farmers, or not that everything served at a Duchess County Office for the Aging Senior Picnic would come from local farmers, or not that everything served inside the Duchess County Jail would come from local farmers, but maybe we could move in the direction of a win-win there. And I just sort of sprung it last Thursday on everybody, and just about everybody voted for it. I think there was only one no. So, out of a $450 million budget, I got a $10,000 amendment passed for a Farm the Table initiative through Cornell Cooperative Extension, trying to get the county operations to incorporate more food from local farmers. So, it was a win, I appreciate that. And I also convinced them to vote just about unanimously for $20,000 to be added to the Agency Partnership Grant Program. This started several years ago. Typically, there's about $1.5 million of funding requests that come from a lot of great nonprofits, and there's only about $700,000 or $800,000 in requests that are approved. So, it's troubled me greatly that, for instance, Hudson Valley Boy Scout Council, for two years in a row, they asked for funding to have a Boy Scout program in Poughkeepsie, and that was rejected two times in a row. Gray Smith House asked for a healthcare prevention education program. Duchess Sandwich, practically every nonprofit in the county has asked for a little bit of extra funding to meet the need, and those requests have fallen deaf here. So, $20,000 is really a drop in the bucket compared to the level of real need, but it's something, I'm thankful for that. So, all of you may say, well, Joel, okay, so you're the only person, you know, of my party that got amendments passed. How could you vote no? The reason I know why I voted no, along with three other members of the legislature, I don't know why they did, but I'll just explain to you that, yes, it is a tax cut that we're facing in 2016, but I will humbly submit to you that a county budget that does not include the restoration of the five-day week for the senior friendship centers, including the one, I know the Church of the Good Shepherd is, it's going to be somewhere else now, it's not going to be at that church anymore, unfortunately, but bringing back the five-day week to the senior friendship centers is only about a couple hundred thousand dollars. To me, there's no reason why that couldn't be put back in the county budget. Expanding the domestic abuse response team, right now, it's only Poughkeepsie, Hyde Park, and Beacom. I've been pushing for 10 years to expand that countywide. Got the Duchess County Citizens Advisory Committee on Domestic Violence to issue a report in June, saying, let's do this. Joel's right. They didn't say my name, but they basically said it was expanded. And then they wouldn't do it. That would cost half a million dollars. Okay, half a million dollars is a chunk of change, but half a million dollars is nothing compared to the $30 million fund balance, we're basically a budget surplus right now. $900,000 contingency budget, there was $900,000 left over at the end of the year in the contingency budget. So, there was money around. And the Human Rights Commission not back in, the Office of Consumer Affairs not put back in, the county money that used to be for Big Brothers, Big Sisters not put back in, for Cornell Cooperative Extension, Green to Community Garden. And the other thing is, frankly, the tax cut could and should be much bigger. For 28 years, I've worked with kids in public and private schools, nonprofits, et cetera, like I said, different educational settings. I know for a fact, we don't need to be spending $35.1 million a year. That's what's in the Duchess County budget. $35 million a year on institutional care, foster care, CSE placements, room and board. If you invest in those kids, those troubled kids, in those at-risk families upfront, instead of when it's too late, you would save money. It's Connect the D-County, they've got the No Money Down Solar Power Purchase Agreements for the county buildings. We should be doing that all over Duchess, we're not. Ulster County moving ahead with the community choice aggregation, like Sonoma County, saving 20%, 25% on electric bills, we're not doing that. A lot of efficiencies that could be found in the criminal justice system, and not to forget $40 million in corporate welfare for the large companies paying their workers power to wages. In the wake of San Bernardino, there are a number of us that are gathering for a candlelight vigil, for universal background checks, for firearms purchases. That's going to be this Friday at 4:30 at Chris Gibson's and Sue Serena's offices in Hyde Park. Welcome to join us. And the other thing I was going to say is, I just have to talk about this a little bit. 12 years ago, a guy named Lawrence Britt wrote an essay, he wrote a column about the warning signs of fascism. And he looked at Germany, Italy, Spain, Chile, Indonesia, places where human rights were disregarded, there was sort of nationalism, out of control, scapegoating of enemies, and I see that a lot. And I'm just asking everybody in this room, everybody watching at home, look for that, the warning signs of fascism. Guy named Lawrence Britt wrote it 12 years ago. Thank you.
So, Joel, I just have two requests of you. I know you're on your way out of here. You bring us a wealth of information every month, and I'm just wondering if there's any way you can possibly forward an agenda of sorts to us, maybe a day or two before, so we can have a little time to digest it, maybe be more prepared for what you have to offer.
So, I'm going to take questions.
What's that? Yeah.
I will do that, I will do that.
Okay. And add on to that, if there could be maybe a segment into your agenda that would kind of highlight those items that would be particularly important to village of Ryenbeck residents, because that's, you know, what we're here for, I mean, general. Not that there's going to be something every month that's specific, but if you could maybe highlight those for us, that would be great.
I will do that. And again, I apologize, the Clinton Town Board meeting started a little while ago, so that's why I always run out here. But thank you for letting me.
All right. Thanks, Joel. On the agenda, we have the public hearing for parking on Center Street, but I believe we closed that last time, and we're actually going to be drafting an altered version of that recommended change, so we can cross that one off.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does that mean you still have a discussion, or there'll be another public hearing?
Yes, there's going to be a new draft that will be posted and available, and then we'll have a public hearing on the new draft. If I can tell you what it's going to do, most likely, the proposal will be, again, for this side of the street, instead of dividing it for village hall business right here and police business, for the police department, it'll be village hall or police business. So.
Am I out of order if I ask a question?
Ask a question.
Well, I just, hi, my name is Chris Chesney. I had spoken to you in the past about, you had mentioned that if you change a law regarding parking, you try to change everything all at the same time. So, I had expressed a concern about extending the two-hour parking to the entire business district, because it stops at certain points on West Market Street and Oak Street. And I didn't know if that was something that could be amended into this law, if it has to be a separate law, or if it's something you can consider. Just because there's like 100 feet of business underneath the law, and it's in, I looked through the code, it's not in there.
Yeah, but it'd be in a separate, it'd be a separate.
We can hold them all into one public hearing if we want it.
Okay.
It's just a separate section.
Sure.
So, if you'd just come up with that public hearing?
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Yep. That's all I have to say. The next one, Dr. Tuma has withdrawn his application, so we will not be holding any additional public hearing on that proposed rezoning. From there, we will be moving into our treasurer's report.
Okay. Good evening. The treasurer's report is for the month of November. The general fund ended the month with $1,3942.17. The water fund ended the month with $625,934.55. And the sewer fund ended the month with $707,207.16. The vouchers presented to be paid, including the prepaid in the general fund, $208,203.52; the water fund, $67,722.15; the sewer fund, $51,936.05; from escrow, $5,067.50; and a capital projects for the sewer of $10,127.68. They are a little higher than normal, because in the prepaid was the New York State Retirement Bill, the annual bill. The transfer of funds, I'm requesting, the first two are just kind of a cleanup, the capital project garbage and the capital project capital are just kind of accrued interest, one for $4.69 and the other $65.79. And I just wanted the authorization to distribute those to the capital reserve funds, because we no longer use those two accounts, we no longer use the garbage. The other transfer I'm asking for is from the sewer operating fund to the sewer capital fund of $10,127.68, which is being presented for the engineering for the Headworks project. The December expense and revenue operating statements have been distributed to the board, and the water and sewer adjustments were reviewed and signed off by the Water and Sewer Department Liaison, and I asked the board for a resolution to authorize the presented adjustments. And the tax program, as previously discussed, the tax program needs to be updated to operate on the server, as well as to accept online payments that we had talked about, we're doing with the utility billing. The cost is $5,000 to upgrade the program, and SCA Software has offered that if the board authorizes the purchase and pays $1,000 out of this fiscal year to get them started, that they will install the program and have it up and running for the June 1st tax collection. So, that's certainly up to you, but that was an offer that they made if we wanted to break it up and get started and be able to accept online payments in June. Also, I just want to report that the first budget meeting for the fiscal year 2016-17 was held on Wednesday, December 2nd at 7:00 PM. An overview of the budget processed and the budget schedule was discussed.
Karen, for the escrow, the $5,000 for that multiple projects?
Multiple.
Okay. And then the capital transfers, are we closing those two accounts, the garbage and the...
Well, they're just kind of in with the general fund capital that I, this month I broke down for the streets, the fire, the office, and that's just, we're no longer using those two categories, so, and it's mainly interest that has just sat there and accumulated, so I just wanted to, authorization to just spread out that interest to.
So, will that be the end of it then?
Yes.
Or will we have to, okay, we won't have to do that again?
For those two, yeah.
All right. So, I'll make a motion to transfer the funds as submitted, as well as payment of vouchers.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
And also make the motion to proceed with the purchase of the upgrade to the tax program as presented.
Second.
Discussion on that? All's in favor?
Aye.
What do you guys want to do to the sewer?
I'll make a motion to accept the transfers for the water and sewer, as I'll be in the report.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, thank you.
Order Department.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So, the water department for the month of November. The water treatment plant, you know, I tried to keep a running scale where we're going, and I'm trying to add more information into that. On a month-to-month basis, you know, this last month, we treated 11,541,000. Last month, it was 13,203,000, so just to give you a scale, as we're going into the wear months, the water has dropped down. There's been no issues with the water treatment facility, everything is running as planned. We did have the Dutch County Department of Health on site to make their annual health inspections, and so we're waiting for report on that. On the distribution system, one of the things that we've been trying to do is capture all the places that use water, and one of the places that wasn't captured was the Village Highway Department. So, working in conjunction with the Highway Department, we were able to locate that line and install a water meter, so we now know what is going on for our own buildings, as you know, in conjunction with use of water. The other project that the water department does, and it's kind of a fill-in project, but it's really replacing all of the analog meters with radio meters, which means the guys can go around and they can drive, basically drive by the residents and read water meters. So, that's, unfortunately, it's not going as fast as we would like, but we continue to work on that. We still have 976 meters to be replaced, and we're going to be looking at alternatives to try to accelerate that, to get more of them installed in the upcoming future. Up at the storage tank, the goats have completed their job for the season. They were actually done and had consumed enough of the vegetation that they were needed to go back to their place of residence, and so they were there for approximately two and a half weeks and returned on 11/16 of the year. At the lagoon, this has been an ongoing project that we've bid on and had a bidder for. The bidder has had several issues with the cleaning of the lagoon. I've asked the engineering department to assist us in helping to get water, to get sludge samples, because the facility requires you have a certain density for the vacuum system to be, for the vacuum system to work to successfully remove the sludge. That's going on, so this is the first phase of a three-year project for that. So, right, that's the ends of my report, no other issues.
Please order.
Good evening. Down at the wastewater treatment plant, everything's running relatively smoothly. We had a lot of leaves fall during the fall months, so that occupied a lot of time, just making sure that they didn't clog up the system. We ended up, for the month of November, treating 3.55 million gallons of wastewater. Probably the biggest news is the receipt of bids on the Headworks project. You may recall that we rebid that, because the initial bids were a little bit higher than we initially anticipated, and actually trustee Crookshank has some updates on that, because he had dealings with the engineering firm.
Yeah, so all the bids were received on December 1st, and the engineer went through them, leveled all the bids, make sure that they were complete, and based on what they found, they have made a recommendation that we proceed with above standard construction. It's their opinion that above standard is the lowest responsible eligible bidder for the award of the contract. Crawford Associates, our engineer believes that it's in the best interest of the village to award the base bid, alternate one, which is for a certain type of plywood, and alternate two for cement siding or metal siding for a total amount of $167,154, which is approximately $30,000 less than the bids we previously received, so that's good news. So, I spoke with Randy Nelson from Crawford Associates today. They're confident and comfortable, they had spoken to the two lowest bidders, and they're, they think that we should move ahead with above standard construction. So, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid and proceed as directed by Crawford Associates.
I'll second. Discussion?
Can they start this time of the year? They can start now, okay. That was one of the questions in qualifying them.
Are we leaving off that section about the...
Yes.
Number three is the grading.
The grading.
How about the grading? Are we removing that?
Well, that's not an alternate.
Okay.
That's a base bid. We certainly could remove, and that's why we asked for a breakdown of their bids, so we had isolated costs for each and every scope of work. So, yeah, we can review that with Crawford and see if it's something that we do not do, or we can do more efficiently, and that, you know, if we did do that, that would eliminate about $16,000 from the 167, so it'd take us down to $150,000.
Right. That was for the finished set work.
Grading of the swell.
Right, yeah. Which they shouldn't be disrupting that. So, they're not seeing.
Right.
And we can remove that after, is it a change order?
We can. We can do a deduct change order for that, and we can add the grading in after.
Okay. All's in favor?
Aye.
Ready for the fire department?
I am, ready for the fire department. The monthly run report for the Ryenbeck Fire Department, the EMS responded to 19 calls in the town, 30 in the village, for a total of 49. Responded to 14 calls, fire calls, in the town, six in the village, for a total of 20. They responded to six motor vehicle accidents in the town, one in the village, for a total of seven. So, the monthly totals for the calls in the town were 39, the calls in the village were 37, for a monthly total of 76. I also have before me the list of the new positions to be filled in the fire department. They had done their nominations and their voting, and they have proposed the following list of officers for the fire EMS. Kyle Amy as chief, Darren Forbes as assistant chief, Brian Knapp as second assistant chief, Chrissy Amy as the EMS captain, Mark Brown as president of Ryenbeck Fire Department, Inc., and Marissa Monahan as vice president. I make a motion that we accept this slate of officers for the next term, 2016.
Second. Okay, yeah. We only confirmed the three.
Oh, is that right?
The three chiefs.
Okay. So, that would be Darren, it would be Kyle Amy, Darren Forbes, and Chrissy Amy?
No, Brian.
Brian Knapp? And we don't do EMS?
We don't, just the three chiefs we have to confirm. And then, we do have the full list of all the captains, the tenants, and the rest of the people in, as well.
So, you want me...
Do we have the motion? The second?
I have the second.
Corrected, okay. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Looking forward to 2016.
Chrissy, I don't even want to say something, something for you to, you want to talk about?
I have a report for your name, Dennis, I want to give you more details.
Oh, okay.
Sure.
Okay, well, the EMS report, this is nice, this is something that we're going to have new going forward, we'll have it every month, and this is great new information. EMS report for the month of November is attached. So, there's a lot of information here, so I don't know if I'm going to be able to... It's a new report.
Yeah, because our call year just ended, so that is the call volume for our entire call year.
Okay, all right. So, just, here's some interesting statistics. The total of calls for the year for the EMS, 621.
Do we know what the total was for the total?
And two, the total calls responded for, was 859.
Okay. Totally about 58 calls?
Yeah.
So, the breakdown is 301 for the village, 244 for the town, and motor vehicle accidents, 42 in the town, 17 in the village, provided mutual aid on 22 occasions.
Does that include northern Duchess?
Calls to northern Duchess? Yeah, what is this, Chrissy, it says calls TX to northern Duchess.
Transferred.
Transported to northern Duchess.
That's how many patients we transported to northern Duchess the past year.
273.
But NDP, do you include NDP as part of that?
If NDP was on our ambulance, yes. If they transported in their own vehicles, no.
And you're still being called by the regular 911?
Yes.
As they are?
I'm sorry?
As they are?
Yes, on some priorities, there are some delays dispatched with us. Depends on the priority of the emergency.
Cooper Fire?
That's it.
Street? Street report.
Oh, you're right.
So, was the reinstatement of Polly, did she leave altogether, or did she go in?
She went into associate membership.
Okay.
A couple years ago, in the way you find all state with associate membership, all she has to do is the middle letter, want to turn her status back to active.
Right.
And she did as such, and...
So, there's no new background check, like there would be, so we kind of...
We didn't do a background check, yes.
Just moved to active.
It was over to...
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because we haven't done this recently, do we reapprove someone who's coming back? Because normally, they move levels of membership, and we don't typically address it by the morning. It's not a new member.
I can add to membership, I guess, they just, do you have the right to approve that?
I make a motion that we approve Polly Walkin?
Walkin.
Be reinstated as a member in good standing of the Ryenbeck Fire Department.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Polly was also a member of our Parks Reparation Committee.
Street Department.
Now, you're out.
Okay. Well, the street department, the only thing they have on there is picking up the leaves on the north and south sides. It's been ongoing. They had a few breakdowns on the equipment, which we fixed in-house, and hopefully, it'll be finished soon with the leaves. They have a request, John Fenton's asking for a request of the status of the brush and leaf pickup schedules for 2016.
We have, we have a couple, the one that I put together, and then Rich sent over another version of it, so we need to...
We're working on that.
Yeah, need to bring it together and finalize a draft for, to put out to Polly.
Is there an end date for this year, and when we'll complete, or it's ongoing until it's done?
It's ongoing until it's done. Some years, it snows, and they have to stop and plow the streets, then the snow melts, and they go back and pick up the leaves. We've been lucky, this year hasn't snowed yet. But I anticipate it should be done, if not this week, next week. I mean, they cleaned up the street today, then more leaves were brought out, so it's ongoing. I don't see how we can have an end date for the leaf pickup. I know it says it on here, he wants an end date in the future. I just think we keep picking it up until it's finished.
Until we adopt a schedule for 2016 that we discussed.
Well, the schedule's going to be more for brush pickups. The leaves, as you can see, it's, people are still putting them out now, it's the second week in December.
But that might be because there's no end date. Right, if all the leaves are off the trees, then it can't be... People are aware that they need to get their leaves to the curb by a certain date, otherwise, they're not going to get picked up. We might be able to motivate them to...
Yeah, I think our, at least my understanding of it, was it was going to be leaf and brush pickup. That was going to be...
For 2016.
For 2016.
Right.
Scheduled pickups, end date.
Which would be on or about December 1st, I believe, would be the plan, right?
Just one more comment, Howie, I know the village picks up trees right after the holiday Just one more comment, Howie. I know the village picks up trees right after the holidays. Is that, and is that going to be scheduled again for this year so people know?
Yeah, there's no schedule to do this. Just trees out and just pick them up.
Okay.
But if you want us to create a schedule for that in the future too, we could do that. Can't we write that right into this as well?
Yeah.
Last day for Christmas tree pickup to be January twentieth? Yeah, we could do that.
Do you have the resolution, Pat, for the DOT? Is that in here? What's that?
Just to eliminate the first part, because that's a fair amount.
Oh, do we do this already?
No, I have the letter written out.
It's the general.
I know.
Okay. So this is a resolution that is allowing us to do work on the county state, state roads. It's an agreement. Establishing the liabilities, et cetera. And we have one in place for West Market Street, the project already, and we have one, we had a blanket agreement in the past. And this is just a renewal of that. So I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as requested.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Guys, anything on lighting and zoning?
No, nothing new to report on. My end you wanted to report.
Let's see, for building permits, we had one C O search. We had fifteen building permits pulled. There was a one sign application fee. One site plan application fee. And one fee for use, I'm sorry, for interpretation fee. Otherwise, there's not much to report.
Okay. And we have a request for buyout of vacation time from Karen McFarlane. Do you have it there, Pat? So I'll make a motion to approve the buyout as requested of thirty-five hours for Karen McFarlane.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Police? They give their report fee?
You can give, I didn't agree to talk with me.
You can give this and stuff. November, twenty-five incidents in the town, eighty-eight in the village. Nineteen tickets in the town, sixty-three in the village. A total of ten arrests and thirteen accidents. They had the speed trailer set up on Montgomery Street. Looks like about the, the best, the best results ever in my experience.
Yeah.
Average speed of twenty-six miles per hour out of seven hundred and seventy-three cars. Six hundred and forty-nine, and then we're under the limit, so that's, I don't know, something's changing here. Everybody's walking the line. Chamber of Commerce tree lighting went off without a hitch, as did the turkey trot. Center clause will be on next month's report, but it also went off without any major hitches. But we do have a hitch with one of our vehicles. If you're just going to tell us about that.
So I, I had Vice Scott and the mayor today that the, the car we put the new engine in last month, after the parade the other night, sort of had some issues. So I took it to Reinbeck Ford on Monday and the transmission's on its way out, basically, on the car. So I haven't gotten in writing yet, but approximately, because approximately the cost is going to be about three thousand dollars to change the transmission out to fix it. That would be a new transmission from Ford. So right now it's up at the Ford dealership waiting for a response from us. So that's where I'm at with it. So I'd bring it back to the board and explain what's going on. We've put about, it's around eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred miles on it since we put the new engine in. It's been, it was running fine up until the other day. And then the transmission started to slip, so that's where I'm at. So I wanted to come and tell you about it, so we could do, to make a decision. I mean, I'd like to get it fixed, but I want to advise you what's going on.
Brand-new transmission or rebuilt transmission?
That would be brand-new.
So I'll make the motion to approve the replacement of the transmission as requested.
Second.
Discussion.
Just to follow up to trustee crusade, can we get a rebuilt transmission?
I didn't ask. I can ask Ford and see if that would be a lower price.
I mean, we have a used car. I mean, yeah, with new engine, but it's.
I can ask them. I just didn't ask. I only talked to them today on the phone about the price of the new transmission. So I can ask and see if I can get it in writing for a used transmission, see if that's any, any less.
I think I'd like to understand the differences in.
Right, new versus rebuilt, whether it's Ford factory. It's like the motor when we got it was from Ford factory. Built by Ford. So there may be a difference between a Ford transmission or versus a transmission not done by Ford. So I can ask and find out and get back to you and or let the mayor know. And I can call him tomorrow when they open and find out.
Yeah, if you can find the warranty on both options.
The warranty, yeah, on transmission, yeah. Warranty on the engine's a year. That was a full year. So transmission, I don't, I have to ask them about that or the warranty will be on it. Versus the two, versus Ford versus another one.
And also, is there, is there a way they can just kind of go over the car and say?
Right.
Give us a report on the car.
Yeah, you know, they went over the car and did the engine and there was nothing wrong with it at the time. So, you know, they fixed everything. There weren't any problems up until the other night. When I didn't, I drove it, there wasn't any problems. The other officers reported it to me. So when they drove it, their second tech got in it and it started to fail on them up in Redwood when they took it up. Nine to Conway's on the way back, they were afraid they weren't going to make it back. So it's one of those things where it started to go and it just finally went. So.
How many miles are on that car?
It is a hundred and four thousand, five hundred. When we replaced the engine, now there's almost a hundred and six on it.
With the new odometer, right?
Oh, odometer. That's odometer, correct.
That doesn't include the hours.
Correct. So the new motor has just under two thousand miles on it with the new motor. So.
So I'll amend the motion and to an approval up to the cost of the new the new transmission. We don't actually have a firm figure though, is that correct?
No, I don't have it in writing. What they told me was approximately three thousand dollars. So I don't have it in writing and I just didn't get it from them. Like I did last time, I brought it to them in writing. I just didn't get it in writing. A short period of time, but I just didn't get it.
I understand. So we could continue the discussion about which option to go if we can save, you know, if it's going to work and it's going to offer us a considerable savings.
Right.
But.
Yeah, my concern though is that.
Rather urgent. Rather urgent, yeah.
So we could have maybe a special meeting in.
Sure.
Next week. Are we going to get?
That's a fine suggestion, so we'll.
Written proposals.
I'll get it written, yep.
With warranties?
Mm-hmm.
Because my concern would be this, is that with a brand-new motor and then a rebuilt transmission. If we had a new transmission, there's really not much left major on the car with the exception of the body, that could go wrong. So for, if we get a, someone to inspect it and say the car's sound, the two major components of the car now are virtually, are brand-new.
Right, correct.
So rather than having bits and pieces of used, you know, so I'd be inclined to go with the new if the rebuilt is just a little bit less than, than the brand-new. So that's just my opinion. I guess we'll wait and see those written proposals.
Yeah, bring us the proposals and then we'll, everybody wants to have another meeting?
Oh, yeah.
That's what we'll do.
We'll have to wait a month. We don't have to wait till next year.
Another, oh, they got it.
It's not a busy month.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll do that and then we'll figure out how we're going to pay for it.
Okay.
At the same time.
Okay, I'll go up to them tomorrow and get it in writing and let you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tree committee?
Howie? Tree committee. John Fenton is meeting with Central Hudson. There's maybe as many as sixty-three trees that need attention from Central Hudson. Most of them are around the wires. John's going to get back to us with that, with that list sent. The idea here is have Central Hudson take down the trees, the dead trees. Right below the wires and then the village can take the rest down. And then we're going to be applying for the Arbor Day here in the Tree City again. And Pat, you, you've read this report, right? And you need to get the expenses for us, please.
I've already requested it from the finance office.
Okay.
So I'm done.
Mayor needs to sign off on the Arbor Day pledge, which will be upcoming.
Will do.
We don't really have any trees that we have to have approved from the village to take down. There's a couple of trees here that are, that the highway department can take down. Some trees where the, the people are responsible for taking the tree down because it's out of the right of way. There's a vacant seat on the tree commission, so we're looking for a new member. If you're interested in planting trees and.
I'll plant trees.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Just tell me you want to show up.
Well, you can fill out an application, have a formal application.
I got all the time in the world.
You do?
Yeah, I can work at home.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I can hear the goats.
We'd be happy to have you.
Since I work at home all day, I get to hear the goats all day.
Well, we can, we'll be happy to have you on the tree commission.
Thank you.
Cynthia, you were on the tree commission. We appreciated you when you were on the tree commissions. It's a good commission, Frank.
I look forward to it.
Okay, so.
Look forward to working with you folks.
We usually meet the first Tuesday of the month.
Beautiful. Works well in my schedule. Thank you.
Good, good. That's it for the tree committee unless anybody has any questions.
No.
Maybe we can plant some trees around the goats.
Well, that's the talent. We would be doing that.
So no, you're supposed to plant trees.
You were supposed to plant trees.
We will take, we will take public comments at the conclusion of the remainder of our, our regular meeting.
Last time we did it in the beginning.
That's because we knew we had a whole, a whole lot. And we didn't, did, did you guys sign into one?
Yeah, all four of us.
Comments? Okay.
You just signed in.
Yeah. We don't have any public hearings tonight either. Oh, we did, but they were removed from the agenda, so. We're not intentionally holding you hostage. Just getting through it. Parks and Recreation, nothing to report. Special requests? Nothing, Pat? Correspondence, we have two. One from Mr. Scales requesting that we eliminate the permit parking on Livingston Street. Anybody want to?
Yes, I.
I'll red or address it?
I agree with Mr. Scales. A lot of, most of the day the streets are empty. There's nobody parking there and it's right in the village center. I'm sure we could use those spots. Just reading what he wrote here. Even the church has problems parking in front of their own church. Lutheran, the First Lutheran Church.
Yeah, and, you know, to, to that point, we don't do it anywhere else. There's other places where parking is intense and it's close to the commercial district and we don't allow, you know, we don't have permit parking, so. I'm in favor of dissolving that permit parking area. To Mr. Scales' point, all those residences on the street all have driveways and places for cars for off-street parking. They have to park off the street during the winter anyway, from November fifteenth to April fifteenth. So I've always been in favor of dissolving that.
Does anyone have an understanding of what the background was, how this came into being?
Yeah, when, initially when Terrapin was proposed for that building and then soon to follow was Gigi's. There was a whole fear of the intense use of that corridor of town, which hadn't seen that kind of use before. Then with the building of Montgomery Row and the elimination of the used car lot and then the building of Montgomery Row, that same kind of thing came along. I just think over time, you know, people have seen the way that it's used and, you know, there are lots of opportunities to park elsewhere. And, you know, I just.
Well, we give out, the village gives out permits, right, for parking on that street? Do you have any idea of how many permits are issued as of now?
I don't. I don't have to look downstairs, but I don't.
I don't know the last time we issued a permit. Or, yeah.
So usually if somebody uses it.
So they don't have to be renewed? Just get a permit and start.
I don't think we should.
Okay. So is the proposal that we adjust the vehicle, make another proposed change to vehicle traffic law?
I'd like a little bit more background if there are any actions made. I, I agree with, you know, your observation, but there's a.
Well, do you want to come back in January and give us kind of a full, full report on it? Is there more?
Is there more? Yeah, I mean, I, I can get deeper into the background of why it was created, I guess. My, my, I mean, my point is, is that, you know, South Street.
Right.
And Astor Home, a lot of the people that work at Astor Home park on South Street. Those people have a request for permit parking.
So all the locations in the village.
So, yeah, I think, you know, and I don't know if, Rich, we would have a public hearing on this as well?
You'd have to.
It would have to, so there's a, there's a lot of time. So, yeah, we could get some more background as to why it was created.
So we will not try to bundle it with the other vehicle and traffic?
No, because I think that other stuff is a little more.
Okay. Good?
This is just a proposal. I think that we should look deeper into.
I agree. Good. Pat, we had something from Central Hudson on LED light. They want, we're requesting to install a light on Montgomery Street.
Yes.
Through the hospital. Now, they took one down there. Doesn't know anything about it.
Pulled up, sorry. Pulled up the light down.
I guess the light was removed somewhere during the construction process. I think they put up a new pole maybe that time. Is that time sensitive to you, Pat?
You had to do it by resolution.
Is there something else where they're going to replace them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that different?
No, this is an individual. They want to add a light by that crosswalk on Montgomery Street. Apparently there was one there. And then.
And they want to replace it with?
And then removed it. They removed the street light, I believe, when they replaced the pole or when they moved the driveway to the hospital. So.
I have it here. Can, can we come back to it?
You what?
I have it here, but can, can we come back to it more?
Sure. Any comments on the minutes from November tenth? No.
I read them now. I have it here.
Don't be posted down, right, Pat? The minutes?
I was waiting until you.
Yeah. I mean, we don't have to have a resolution to. We just are waiting to, for comment at this the following month. Do you have the list of people that signed in that wanted to speak? So just a reminder on the public comment, we're going to continue to eliminate three minutes. And please continue to direct your comments to the board and refrain from discussion and responses from, from the audience. So we have Enrique Carrido. Come on up, introduce yourself, please.
I'm Enrique Carrido. I own two Hyde Road. I'm the oldest tenure resident on Hyde Road. I've been there for twenty, twenty-eight years. I've seen the subdivision grow. I've also seen all the abuses that the village and the town have done to the, to, to us. Including, and I'm really here to voice my, my appall, my dislike of two issues. The goat issue is, is, is the latest of the second issue. The other issue was the fire hydrant where you were going to tax us for putting, for having fire hydrants on Hyde Road. The nineteen of fire hydrants on Hyde Road. That just, that just talks to how bad a relationship you have. You also, by the way, should know that there is a violent hill homeowners association that you've never dealt with. When we got notice of the goats, I think what, what happened was Mrs. Coons actually called all the residents on Hyde Road. I know that she left a message on my, my. I know that she left a message on my, my phone saying that the goats were coming. She didn't, well, she wasn't, there was no notification at all in terms of any public hearings or any, any notifications from the village. You are, I guess, you are a homeowner. You're not a municipality in the town. That's very key and I would, I would suggest you talk to your lawyer about municipality property or town property because you do not have, I don't believe you have the restriction other than a homeowner and by that you're, you're bound by the deed restrictions. I also talked to Nir Taghrani, who was the developer of the crane subdivision. And there, he's going to get me two documents. One document was when you, when you felt that the tank, you actually committed yourself to maintaining the trees to camouflage the tank. That's never been done. You've never replaced any of those, any of those trees that died. And then the, this goat is clearly you're, you're subjected to the deed restrictions. So I'm going to try to pursue that. The net outcome of this, and you can ask your lawyer, is that since deed restrictions are, are, are enforceable only by civil law, we would, we would probably end up having to have thirty, thirty lawsuits against the village for the goat violation of deed restrictions, you know, and let, let that go away by itself. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I can respond to just a couple of those. Part of the reason why we had the goats up there was because of our observation of the site and not being all that attractive and well-attained. So that's one step of it. Maintaining the trees is another step of it, so. That's our priority, to make it, make it a nice property for the neighbors and for anyone who drives by.
Well, we're the neighbors. The neighbors are here.
Yeah.
You have a couple of neighbors here. We're, we know you're a neighbor. That's what we're saying. We don't want it to look like an abandoned property. We want to take care of it.
That's been like that and the goats didn't help.
That's correct.
The goats didn't help.
Listen, I'm responding to your request and we are here. I've only been on the board for not even three years yet. Gary's new to the board. What we're telling you, this is a renewed priority. We want to clean up that property and make it, make it presentable. Make it look like somebody cares for the property. So that's, that's, that's our goal. The means that we do that, you know, that's, that's up for discussion, obviously. Just satisfied with the goats. And yes, we did call you. We thought that that was an appropriate personal manner to reach out to the neighbors and let you know that they wouldn't be, so you weren't be surprised that they won't.
You will have to make a decision.
Yes, it was, Frank, you will have your opportunity. And yes, it was, no, it was not the day of. It was prior. We wanted to let you know. In terms of it being a municipality, yes, it is a municipal-owned property. No, it is not subject to the, to the same zoning laws as a homeowner. The deed restrictions took place after the property, the village was there first. The water plant was there first. Yes, it's been reviewed with our attorney. So there, I don't believe there's a legal action there. We, we obviously did our due diligence on that. You have a different opinion, we will continue down, down that road. In terms of the hydrants, I don't know if maybe your dissatisfaction is possibly with the town, but the village never suggested taxing you as an individual for, separately for hydrants on Hyde Road. That's never been an issue. Our position was to save those hydrants. The town government wanted to remove those hydrants because they saw them as excessive, that there were too many on Hyde Road, that they were not necessary. So our position was to, to, to try to save them and that is what we, well, our position at the time.
Cynthia?
Sorry, I'd like to.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Gary.
I'm sorry. As an agent to the water department, I would also tell you that when I first came on board, one of the things that Heath and I discussed, as he mentioned, was trying to maintain our facilities in a manner that they look respectable. And, and we struggled. We've, we've struggled for years on how to make the reservoir area into a well-kept area. It's, we've tried alternative methods. This was a, this was something we wanted to try as a way to do also, see if we could make it, clean it up and make it look more presentable. I'm also open to suggestions. If you have a suggestion on how we can maintain that in a better way, in a cost-effective way, I would really appreciate your input and I will gladly sit down with you at any time to have that discussion.
I'd just like to add one more thing on the trees. I know there's the pine trees that are out front and the bottom parts are in poor health, so I don't know if we're going to look into replacing the trees or trimming the, the dead stuff out of there, but we want to approach it as an overall plan to make it a more attractive and care-for site. So if you have suggestions, please let us know in terms of which areas you feel, you know, need, need more screening and, and what, what you'd like to see up there. We'd be more than happy to, to work with you on that. Yes, Cynthia?
I was going to speak to something that is no longer on your agenda, but I appreciate the opportunity that you offered. Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll save you three minutes.
Okay.
Cynthia, do you want to, do you want to address the petition? Do you, no?
It's.
A moot point, moot point.
It's a moot point, I would think.
Karen Pearson, I know, I don't believe she's here, right? Is that you?
No, she's, she left.
Oh, yeah, okay. I thought so, but you looked like, oh, no, that's me.
I thought you were looking at me like.
No. I thought I saw her leave. Okay, and we have Ronald.
That's me.
Okay.
Ross.
Ross, oh, yeah.
Gotcha. Not too hard.
Welcome, Mr. Ross.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak before the board, board members. I am a resident of thirty Hyde Road and I've been there about twenty-one years. And shortly after Enrique was there, we were there not too long after. And I'm here on behalf of our neighborhood as well as the goat project, which I thought was pretty cool. I didn't know that they were coming. I guess you tried to call our house back.
Yes, I did. I tried.
But we never received the call.
Neither. I didn't have your phone number because I can only call if I have.
So I was surprised to see the goats, but I know the farmer who raises the goats and his whole family and I think it's a very green project and I think it's wonderful that the goats went in there and took down all the high grass and the weeds and, and did a good job. They really cleaned it up pretty good. I think that you've got to come to a happy medium with the reservoir area, the municipal property there. I think that our neighborhood, like Burger Park, is a wonderful place. It's one of the really key neighborhoods in Rhinebeck. And to have that municipal, you know, reservoir property looking as shabby as it has been is kind of like a disgrace to the village as well as the town. Just like I was very upset to see the way the "Welcome to Rhinebeck" signs were this year with all the weeds growing around them. That was pretty upsetting to me. And I've been around Rhinebeck all my life and I don't have much more to say other than I came here as a neighbor to Mr. Senna Morena to speak on behalf of our neighborhood and hopefully things can get better and improve. So I appreciate your time, man. Happy holidays. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Frank, I apologize. I skipped your name. That was, trust me, it was not intentional.
No, 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 no. So thanks. Happy third day of Hanukkah here at Christmas. Here's some pictures. You made the comment on going to discussion about the board. At the last meeting we had, I looked at every agenda, goats aren't on it. That comment was made directly by the board. I made a, I made a lot of questions last time, so this time I'm going to make some statements. There is not one agenda item that says anything about the goats being discussed. Not one. Please show it to me. Gary, you said it's an eyesore up there. Direct quote. You're right, it is an eyesore. That tent is an eyesore. You said you were bringing the goats in to take care of the vines. They're there. They're all along the fence line. You didn't do a thing. The goats didn't mow the field down. The tractor did a month ago, before the goats showed up. Twice a year, the tractor comes and brush hogs the field. What the goats are doing is they're, they're excruciating feces on the property and they're jumping on top of the pump house roof. So what's going to happen? I know I'm going to hear from a few neighbors, hey, I think they got an electrical short in there because the roof probably went because of the goats and now it's full of water inside and now you've got to spend several thousand dollars on a new, on a new roof. I'd really like to know why that shelter is still there, if you're still thinking about this. Seeing that shelter up there tells me you've already made the decision on what you're going to do. So please help me with that. I'd like to know, I'd also like to know who owns the shelter. You made it a point to say that you spoke, called and spoke to everybody. I have quotes. I have quotes. I listened to the tape. It starts at forty-nine minutes and fifty-two seconds. You did call everyone. You didn't talk to everyone. Had you, you would have really heard what many of the residents feel. Scott, your question was really good last time. I didn't want to, I didn't want to say, yeah. Which neighbors are opposed to this? You know, am I speaking for everyone? I can tell you I'm speaking for several of the neighbors now. And I'm hoping I don't have to come back here. This is a one or two million dollar neighborhood. What are we doing with farming homes? And you think you're exempt to everything. I mean, by the way, the word livestock was brought up. Somebody said I omitted the word livestock. I can tell you that in the noise ordinance, there's no mention of livestock. But the funny thing is, is that when I looked up livestock under the code violations, I was amazed because it says.
Almost three minutes, Frank.
Keeping of livestock accessory to a resident shall require three acres for the first two medium livestock animals such as goats, sheeps, ponies or llamas, and one acre for each two additional. You've got two acres of land up there after the water tank and you've got thirty goats in a, in an area. I mean, you're clearly violating that code. Now, I can go on and on and on, but you know, the goats don't belong there. You didn't talk, you know, Howie made it a point, well, I, I was up there, but you didn't tell everybody that you spoke to my wife when she was there and she said, yeah, Howie, I hear the goats all the time.
And I didn't hear any goats.
But that's good because I didn't say they talk twenty-four seven.
I was talking to your wife, but you heard any goats.
I didn't say they are noisy twenty-four seven. What I said is they go on and on. As far as the noise decimal.
Closing statement. You're covered.
As far as the noise decimal goes, the law doesn't say anything about the noise decimal in regards to animals. It says a dog barking or a crew row roaring for intermittently thirty minutes. And if they do that, it's in violation of the code, guys. It's a neighborhood. If we wanted a farm, we would have bought a farm.
Isn't there a farm?
Frank, did you say one thing?
Are there sheep within three or four hundred feet? Frank, just read his comment.
No, it's about a quarter of a mile.
Is it? I would say that you're strategically placed in the center between sheep and goats. I would say you're in the middle.
And horses and snowmobiles that go out, that have right of way in my property.
This was a temporary way to maintain something that's very difficult to maintain.
No, the brush hog works.
So can I, can I address your comments on that brush hog? First off, the brush hog was there in July and it was, and it did try to clean it up. It does not do a very good job on the front part of the property.
Does a beautiful job.
It doesn't even touch the front of the property where the.
It looks fabulous. Are you kidding?
It can't get close to the fence area or clean up around the vines. Now, in.
Does it cost eight hundred dollars to hire them?
It costs over four hundred dollars per time, yes.
Yeah, well, the goats cost you eight hundred.
And Frank, so.
So that's twice as much.
No, Frank, we used to pay to have that brush hog several times a year.
Twice. You only do it twice. I've been living there ten years.
And.
Okay.
It comes there twice. Look, if you're going to make a statement, you've got to make a truthful statement. I'm here to be truthful.
Can I, you've got to finish?
Yes, but please make a truthful statement.
Frank, have a seat, please. Let Gary finish, okay? You've had your time. You've had double your time. We've had others yield their time. Please have yourself a seat.
The brush hog was not able to get close to the fence or clean up any area around the fence in any part of that section of the reservoir. So that I agree that the fence area is a problem, right, and for us to maintain it. We've tried spraying it, which was ineffective. And this year it was sprayed earlier in the season, which killed the stuff around, around the fence and therefore the goats couldn't clean it. But in generally, if it would have been standard, non-sprayed issue there, the goats would have cleaned off all around the fences. And that we verified with the owners of the goats. So I think it would have given it a chance, given it, given it a chance to work. That area would be really look better. And if we get to continue to maintain it and also trim the trees or replace whatever needs to be replaced up there, we can make that place looking presentable again like it should.
You can do a better job with human labor.
Frank, you're coming.
I think the real takeaway here, Frank, is that this wasn't a permanent decision.
Why is the tent still there then? Why is the tent still there?
Can I finish? You had your time. Let me have my time, okay? It's a temporary.
I know, you made it.
Listen, the last time, the last time you were here was November, okay? You said that there's nothing on the agenda. There's nothing on the agenda because we haven't made a decision whether, in what course we're going to take. We've listened to your comments.
No, I said there was nothing on the agenda all year about the goats. You folks made the, the statement that it was.
Temporary.
No, you made the statement that you had open government and you placed it, that it opened to the public.
We had a meeting and we discussed it and it's usually in connection with the water department report. And even on this report right here, goat job is done. They returned home on November sixteenth, two thousand fifteen.
No, you're talking about after the fact. I'm talking before you made the decision to bring the goats up.
I understand. We're talking, we're talking about now, okay? I can't, I can only talk about what I have in front of me right now, okay?
It's not what you spoke about last time. I'm trying to clear the record.
I didn't say anything last time, Frank, so it wasn't me, okay?
Well, what you did do is you said there was no goats at the waste treatment plant and that was a really rude remark to make because your board members laughed when you made that remark. They heckled, they heckled me when you made that remark.
That was a factual statement.
Huh? And there was no reason for you to make that remark.
Nonetheless, Frank, we're not dealing with a decision that was made to permanently place goats there. And that's all I have to say on this point.
Now I have two comments before we close it. The first is in regards to the goats not being on the agenda. Every month, we talk about the water department. So you may not see specifically an item on the agenda that addresses the use of goats, but if you look in the minutes, you will see, or if you go to YouTube, go to the website, you will see that the goats were addressed multiple times. If we put every, every single comment on the agenda, it would be very long. So it is included in part of the plan to manage the water.
ISY, where the residents of Hyde Road notified before you made a decision and while you were making the discussion and you said it had been and it wasn't. And all of us know that it wasn't brought to our attention.
This right here is an open forum. The goats were not on the agenda now, but you guys are here, the water department. You're a neighbor of the water reservoir. It is discussed every month. You're welcome every month to come and hear about what's happening up there. If you have suggestions. If this has been a problem, the trees have been a problem for a decade, you've been welcome to the two decades.
We never heard about that.
So this is the first time I heard a complaint from a neighbor of mine almost three years ago.
Should I have complained about them? They do black fill and burnt my pipe and flood my basement? Did I ever complain about that?
Who did that?
Water department.
He just got here a couple of months ago.
So I have a question. The other mentioned. So, I, the other mention, uh, is you said that we called and discussed. Um, we did call, we did not discuss the situation with everyone. Some people were not home, messages were, were left, some people do not have, uh, answering machines or the numbers weren't correct. We made an attempt, we placed a phone call to what we believed was the correct number for every resident of Hyde Road. Did we have a, a lengthy discussion with everyone? No, we made a best effort.
Just for the record, I called her.
Yep.
So, they returned my call.
I, you left a message, Mr. Garrido.
I left a message, I, and I asked you to call back.
You stated your comment on, on my machine. I got your message, I passed that along to the trustees.
And I asked to call back.
Yes, Scott, do you have?
I just have a question. You said there's a homeowners association? How many member, how many houses are there, or?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven on Hyde and another fifteen on, on, um, north, north.
Interlands?
Has the village ever been invited to join the association?
It, it is there by, by, unfortunately, it's default, right? Because there hasn't been a selection of the, of the officers for at least ten years.
Oh, so it's.
It is incorporated.
It's incorporated, but it doesn't really.
So, there's eleven on Hyde?
There's eleven on Hyde.
And then nineteen or something on the?
Yeah, something like that. There's about thirty people on the list.
So, everyone that lives on Hyde is a member?
Not necessarily, if they paid their dues, which nobody's paid dues.
How many residences are there on Hyde?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. Uh, okay. So, there would potentially could be eleven members if they paid their dues.
Not including the village.
You're, you could be a member of the village. Do you pay taxes on that property?
It's municipal property.
Town property?
What's that?
It's also town property.
Yes, it's town property, owned by municipality.
Okay.
Like the town hall is located in a village, and they don't pay taxes on that property. Same, same concept.
And I wonder, what, when was the reservoir built?
It was five years before I got there, so that was nineteen.
And you were the first one there.
I was.
So, everyone that lives on Hyde though moved in and the reservoir was already established?
Yes.
Yes, it was, it was there for, when I moved in, in, in eighty-nine.
It'd been there for, so, eighty-four?
Two, two years.
And Nir owns the subdivision.
I think it was eighty-five.
Nir, Nir Tagrahani was the owner, was the developer of the subdivision.
Right, okay. I just want to just.
And there was a contract, which I've asked for, a contract between the village and, 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 uh, Tagrahani, uh, Development Corp. About the, the, the proper maintain, maintenance of that building. Because obviously, Kathy and, and Emil Singh had to turn their house ninety degrees in order not to face the water tower, right? Frank had to, had to plant twenty trees?
Yeah, I planted.
Twenty trees?
Twenty thousand.
Well, my point, although, the reservoir was there first. I mean, you could plant your, you could build your house anywhere or decide not to build a house, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just, it was established, though. It's not as if we moved in, built the reservoir, and then.
It was there for two years.
It was there, okay.
And I think my point is, is that it, it was just a temporary proposition. And I think that we should take up, uh, trustee Bassett's recommendation that, you know, moving forward to have an open dialogue, if there are suggestions as to how we can, uh, deal with this issue, we're open to hearing those suggestions.
Thank you. That's not what I understood the last time I was here.
Do we have Katie Garcia?
It's a moot point at this point.
Moot point. Chris Chestney, he already spoke earlier. How about Kathy Shet?
Kathy Shet.
Yes.
Did you directly sign it?
No.
Oh, that.
She's Emil's wife, lives on right across from the.
So, did you sign in?
No, she didn't, I signed for her.
Does she want to speak?
Wonder if she wants to speak.
Not at this point, I'm just kind of learning what's going on.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming. Anybody else got any other business? Well, before we, uh, move into executive session, just like to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, we'll be back in two thousand sixteen, and. Okay. Yes. So, make a motion to enter executive session to discuss, uh, contract negotiations and employment of an individual employee.
Merry Christmas.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.